Police Department staffing levels in Patrol Division. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Council. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address you on this important issue. The first slide we have up, you know, quite honestly, coming in for today, I really wanted to lay out something and compare us, our patrol staffing levels to other cities around us. I made some calls to Chief Tony Chapman from San Francisco, who told me he has about 1,100 officers in his patrol force, to my colleague in Austin, who has a little over 600 in his patrol. But, you know, instead of doing that, I just wanted to compare us to ourselves, really. And, you know, 1986, we had an authorized staffing level of about 1,108. And, you know, 30 years later, we're at about the same, with a difference in population, as you can see, of 43 percent. So, you know, I put that slide up just so because it shows, quite frankly, and to show the residents, really, that their officers here in this police department are second to none, and do an amazing job at what they do. However unsustainable, you know, we've, the overtime has been, as we're going to address, I mean, our officers do an amazing job, day in and day out, for this community, regardless what they're handed. So, next slide, we're going to go over through our staffing levels real, real quick, is our authorized sworn staffing, as we just described, is 1,109. Our current staffing is 919. But after you take away people that are in training and the recruits, you have 884 people. And then, when you subtract disability, and modified, and people on other leaves, that leaves us with 812. And that number does fluctuate. Right now, we're operating in the low 800s. And so, what that really means, just in layman's terms, is the fact that if I were to call all hands on deck today for this city, we would only be able to call back about 812 people. This is, again, some historical perspective with regards to how our staffing has diminished through the years. And, you know, the numbers speak for themselves. Obviously, we had issues that started back, really, in 2010, but these numbers show from 2011 till present, our reduction in officers, and sergeants as well. So, our patrol staffing in the background is, we're authorized approximately 550 patrol officer positions. And, as command staff, we decided that, when we were going, as we're going through our issues, that 500 is what we felt was the minimum number that we felt would keep our officers and the community safe, meaning the minimum number of officers and beats that could obviously provide services, as well as keep each other safe. And so, currently, we're falling 87 officers short of that goal, at 413. And so, the 87 officers, really, what that represents, each officer that works patrol, works a four-day workweek. And so, you have to multiply that number by four to get the number of actual 10-hour shifts per week that have to be filled. And right now, our projections tell us that in September, we're going to have 348 10-hour shifts a week that will have to be filled. Again, mandatory overtime was there to try to fix this, and I'll get into that a little bit later. But by redeploying the 47 officers back to patrol, we feel, and also on the next slide, I believe I'll explain this further, we feel that we'll be able to manage that mandatory overtime a lot easier. If you look at this slide, this really just shows how the numbers of patrol, or numbers that have bid in patrol have dwindled through the, through the years, starting back in September of '12, all the way till now. As you can see, we had a high of 492 officers bidding patrol, to currently where we have 413. You know, if no change of the 10-hour shifts need to be filled, I mean, I mean, if you could look on the right hand, so it says, if you look, walk you through, it says, numbers of officers bidding, patrol minimum staffing, gap in patrol staffing, but then that last column's the most important column to me, and what that my command staff and I felt necessary to come before you, is the fact that, you know, if we continued at this pace, for this current shift, we'd have to fill over 9,000 10-hour shifts for this shift alone. If nothing changed, we would, that would equate to over 18,000 10-hour shifts per year that would have to be filled. And so, again, we feel, if you look back up, I mean, it's still not, it's still not going to be an easy job, but, you know, we aren't trying to call back all 87 officers. We feel that we can work within the confines of our mandatory overtime to fill the 40 individuals in patrol, which still will equate to, as you can see, 4,160 10-hour shifts per six months that we would still have to fill under mandatory overtime. So, we are still trying to balance, and we didn't bring back all 87 to fill that gap in order to perform other services. This slide here is really important, because this is one of the things that, you know, as we go, and we talk about why are we doing this, and why we need to, is really, when it comes down to the, the human cost, and the, quite frankly, the fatigue that officers feel, and really goes down, right down to morale of the officers and their families as well, is that, as you can see from, you know, this, we'll just, I'll just deal with 2016 alone, from March to August, I had to hold officers over, and what that means is an officer that concludes their 10-hour shift, then is asked to stay into the next shift. And we had to hold officers over, as you can see, over 1,400 times, just from March to August, for over 7,500 hours. And about 1,000 of those times, I had to keep those officers here for at least six hours. You know, one thing that I will say, just this morning, I'm getting gas in my car, and there's an officer that's pumping gas, and his back's to me, and he can't see me. And this resonated to me, when he says on the phone to, to one of his kids, that, "Have a great day in school today, because daddy doesn't know what time he's going to be home." And, you know, you hear that, and I was coming in here today, and I just have to, I cannot emphasize enough, you know, the human factor in this, and, you know, the fact that our, you know, officers that are working, you know, it used to be that, you know, during your shift, you know, you may have to miss important things in your, in your family's lives. But now, these officers have to miss things even after their shift would be over. And I think this is just an important, important issue that we have to, we have to discuss. You know, this, coupled with, it's this, these holdovers, coupled with the fact that we had the 348 shifts that were projected, you know, plus the fact, and more importantly, I can't gloss over, the fact that our mandatory overtime has limitations, that we thought we're going to be able to fill these gaps. And the reason why we're coming before you is really, was this occurred after the bid, and that we really, didn't really truly have a sense as to how this mandatory overtime would work until after the bid was done. But when these numbers came before us, we felt a need to, to bring back these officers, because as we've been in the staffing crisis, it just simply has gotten worse, and we need to do something about it. You know, this redeployment will hopefully, hopefully help fatigue that our officers are feeling. It will help morale, in that hopefully officers know that, you know, they'll be able to do something later on, after their shifts. You know, and it's going to provide, in my opinion, it's going to provide better service to our residents, you know, our better service delivery for our residents, you know, help response times, and help us respond to other issues that, quite frankly, at times right now, when we get busy, we simply can't. So, we're hopeful that, you know, this will help, and that's why we're here before you. You know, this next, next slide, that, you know, this didn't just happen overnight. And I think it's important to note all the steps that this police department has taken ever since 2010. In a few moments, I'm going to have Assistant Chief Knopf highlight some of the department memos that we have, that we've had to push out through these last years to really continue to fill the service delivery gaps that we have, and the safety of our men and women. But, for example, we've had to reduce staffing in the bureau units, and these are in no particular order. You know, we've started, we did a flex program to augment patrol staffing. The flex program was bringing detectives out of the detective bureaus, mostly on, mostly on day shift, to work patrol for one of their days. And so, that would be, one day they weren't working in investigations, that they would have to come out. So, we tried that. Obviously, the utilization of patrol overtime and pay cars, whether it be burglary or quality-of-life cars. We do currently are starting a study that's, with Matrix, that's going to help us look at our deployment as it is, and tell us exactly how we can redeploy our, our resources, both in the Bureau of Investigations and in patrol, in the current state that we're in. We're hopeful to have that study done, hopefully by the end of the year, if not the beginning of next, so we can try to put that in place. Now, we've civilianized positions. We've obviously started, it's successful, but we started the community service program. We've reduced our command staff, reduced sergeant's positions. We've reduced services, you know, we, from unverified burglary lines, alarms, more online reporting, and non-injury accidents. We did at one point consolidate to three patrol divisions, and then ultimately moved back to four for operational reasons, but we tried that. We created a contact-to-completion program that allows officers to take their investigations, i.e. like a burglary, and be able to investigate that. But obviously, that takes time, puts pressure on the officer as well, as they're in patrol, trying to investigate those crimes as well. But we do, we do that, and we still do that, and we've been, we've been successful. We've created overtime slots for the Bureau of Investigations, for detectives to follow up on investigations on scheduled days off. We've cut our night and day detectives. Those are detectives that work after hours, that help triage cases that we have out in the field, and are able to package them for the detectives to get them in the morning, and sometimes even able to give advice to the officers out in the field to be able to perform their duties. We've reduced the traffic unit. We have transferred K-9 unit to patrol division. We did eliminate the violent crimes enforcement team, which we brought back, but under reduced staff. Obviously, the mandatory patrol shift holdovers that we've done. The mandatory overtime program. Full-time Meyerport Division was moved back to patrol, and it's done on an overtime basis only. We've reduced time off for our officers. It's impacted promotions. And we just recently, you know, we've done the military, military in lieu to try to get more applicants from the military. And I'm going to have Assistant Chief Knopf cover some of the highlights from some of the memos that we've had to put out in recent years.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Dave Knopf, Assistant Chief of Police. So, when we started looking at this in the last few weeks, Chief asked, hey, you know, what has the department done? What have we done to address these issues over the past? I think we kind of lose ourselves in everything we're doing to different administrations and what they've done in the past. And so, I took a look at it, went back to 2010, and I found from 2000, starting in 2010, there's 26 memos between November 2010 to August of 2016, describing the measures taken or policy implemented in the department to address staffing issues. And I'll spare you all 26, I have copies if, if anybody's interested. But just to highlight some, starting in 2010, we reassigned the K-9 unit to patrol. We allowed the K-9 unit to keep their dogs, but they were assigned patrol shifts, the swing shift. Again, in December of 2010, what we did is we took information center staff, and on their overlap days in the information center, we reassigned them to work patrol specifically. In, moving on to July of 2012, we implemented a prisoner transport pilot program. And what this did was, is on, on overtime basis, we had officers assigned just to transport prisoners from a location within the city to the jail. And what that did is enabled our patrol officers to go ahead and go back into service a lot sooner, as, and they weren't, so they wouldn't be down for an extended period of time. In November of 2013, a memo was issued directing all traffic enforcement units to investigate all major injury accidents during their work hours, which was, at the time, was Monday through Friday from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. It also assigned traffic enforcement teams to the captains of the four divisions, to address crime-related issues plaguing their divisions. Prior to that, patrol, patrol officers would investigate all traffic accidents, again, trying to free up officers to handle other calls for service and other priorities. In July of 2012, an operational changes memo for the department was issued due, due to a number of factors, including reduced staffing levels. This included all the bureaus, but specifically the Bureau of Investigations. One lieutenant was transferred back to patrol from the assaults juvenile and missing persons unit. And those details, the responsibility of those details were given to other investigation lieutenants, including the on-call hate crime incidents were now reported to the gang investigations lieutenant. In the Bureau of Administration, the personnel unit lieutenant was civilianized. And at that point, we began the process, many of you will remember, of contracting out of our background investigators. In the Bureau of Field Operations, the admin lieutenant was eliminated and reassigned to the substation project that was, we were trying to complete in 2012. There was a reorganization of the patrol division from four divisions to three divisions, which necessitated the reassignment of central division captain responsibilities to the other remaining three captains. In August of 2012, was the first temporary sworn deployment memo issued. At that point, that memo stated sworn staffing levels were the lowest experienced in many years, and we had 1,055 officers at that time. And due to the fact that were not enough sworn personnel to staff the three divisions, four sergeants and 27 officers throughout the department were deployed back to patrol, to including, to include officers from the traffic enforcement unit, financial crimes unit, graffiti, FBI task force, horse-mounted unit, truancy abatement burglary suppression unit, regional computer forensics lab, the chief's adjutant, human trafficking task force, and family violence unit. In June of 2013, another departmental operation change, changes order was issued directing, to address ongoing violence and accounting for current staffing levels in patrol, directing gang investigation unit and assaults officers to deploy on the weekends, to work swing shift on the weekends. It also directed additional gang suppression cars, and had the traffic enforcement units adjust their schedules to work on a rotating basis, one week on in patrol, one week off working traffic enforcement, one weekend back into patrol, and then back directly related to traffic enforcement. The merge unit and special operation units also adjusted their work hours to work in the field. And at that time, in August of 2013, we created the gang suppression unit due to an update, an uptick in gang-related crime that summer, which evolved back into the violent crimes enforcement team. In October of 2013, another department memo was issued, implementing the flex car staffing plan, which Chief Garcia already outlined to you, having officers from other bureaus come back one of their workdays and work in patrol. In July of 2014, summer staffing program was, was issued, and this was to address reduced staffing. And what that memo basically directed, it stated that we would continue with the department flex car program, backfill pay cars due to increased vacancies. We would maintain mandatory staffing levels for each of the patrol shifts, and this was done first by either voluntary, by volunteer, by volunteers to hold over, and if we didn't get enough volunteers, that they would be mandated to hold over. And then, adjusting special operations units to supplement patrol. And at that time, lastly, the training for officers in the department was limited to mandatory training only, only that, that training that's mandated by post, that we need to train our officers on. And lastly, just as a snapshot, in January of 2015, the second redeployment of patrol resources was issued. And in that memo, four, four sergeants and 23 officers were sent back to patrol from the metro unit. And the other bureaus were affected by one lieutenant, four sergeants, and 13 officers who were sent back to patrol. Thank you.
Council, we just felt that took some time, but, and there's more. But we felt that it's important to impress upon the council and this community that this police department did not throw his hands in the air, and absolutely has been trying to patch these gaps. And so, it was important for us to make sure that the council, as well as our community, knows that this department has been trying.
Jennifer Shembry, Director of Employer Relations. I'm going to talk a little bit about the meet and confer process quickly. So, as the chief mentioned, we have already done the shift bid for the September through March shift change. And so, the redeployment of the 47 officers would require us to do a shift rebid. And the bid preference will be affected for a significant number of police officers, and that is a significant issue. For example, you may have a police officer who bid and got on day shift, and he or she may have already worked out daycare situations, school situations, those sorts of things. And this would upend that, and potentially, that same officer could end up on a swing or a mid-shift. So, we do want to emphasize the importance of, significance of doing a shift rebid. The redeployment is going to be spread out across the department to lessen impact on the employees and services to the public. This is an urgent issue. That shift rebid needs to occur immediately. The shift change is scheduled to occur on September 11th, so that is the effective date of the next shift change. And because of the short timeframe we have, there is not enough time to meet and confer. Making an emergency determination under the MMBA, which I'll explain a little bit further in a couple more slides, would allow bypass of the meet and confer process for the shift rebid, but the city would still be required to meet and confer after, at the earliest practical time. A little bit of background on the meet and confer process, we thought would be helpful. The meet and confer process is governed by the Myers-Millias-Brown Act, which is in the government code, and the city charter, as well as our local rules, which we refer to as our employer-employee relations resolution 39367. The meet and confer process happens through the authorized representatives. In the city's case, the authorized representatives are the city's negotiators, who's delegated that authority by the city manager. And our direction and authority comes from the mayor and city council, who's elected by the residents of San Jose. On the other side of the table for labor, there's the labor negotiators, and their direction and authority comes from their union membership. On the city's side, the mayor and the city council provide us direction as a single body. There's been a lot of questions about Measure V, so we thought we'd briefly go over what Measure V is. Per the city charter, any disputes involving things that are subject to meet and confer with our police officers association, as well as our firefighters' union, can go to binding interest arbitration to settle that dispute. In 2010, the voters passed Measure V, which amended Charter Section 1111 to prohibit an arbitrator from making a decision or award that deprives or interferes with the discretion of the police or fire chief in making managerial, operational, or staffing decisions. We wanted to clarify here, though, that Measure V does not excuse compliance with the Myers-Millias-Brown Act. We still have to meet and confer, and meet and confer in good faith to impasse, and then in the end, if it falls under the provision of Measure V, the city council can choose to implement in open session. And if it does not, then we would go to binding interest arbitration. But we still have to comply with the Myers-Millias-Brown Act and negotiate over that issue. We wanted to note the, that we have achieved some very significant items through labor negotiations with the POA. I think almost all of these were with voluntary agreement with the POA, and they're very, very significant issues. In 2011, we did achieve a 10% total compensation reduction with the POA that was, was agreed to by the POA. We civilianized up to 20 positions. In 2012, we outsourced background investigators. In 2013, also through agreement, we implemented the Tier Two pension benefits for new employees, made changes to sick leave payout. And probably the most significant item that we've been working on in the last year and a half or so is the alternative pension reform framework that was directed by the city council. And we've also made changes to increasing bilingual pay. We got body worn cameras across the goal line, mandatory overtime staffing program, and some changes regarding community policing. And then in 2016, we've made some changes to the police sergeant's transfer policy, and also, as the chief mentioned, changed the minimum qualifications for a police officer to include military in lieu. And through all of this, we also have contracts with all 11 of our bargaining units, most are multi-year contracts. Under the MMBA, back to the patrol staffing emergency situation, under the MMBA, which again is the government code that oversees labor negotiations, we can, in cases of an emergency, where the governing body has determined an emergency, we can bypass the meet and confer process. Doesn't mean it's completely waived. We would just meet and confer after the emergency is declared, determined. And so, this is the government code section that authorizes that. And so, the next steps, so the city council can make an emergency determination under the MMBA. It's specific to this very issue, this patrol staffing issue, the redeployment of the 47 officers, and the shift rebid, and it bypasses the meet and confer process to allow for that. And then the city will meet and confer with the POA after implementation. And so, that is our recommendation, is to make an emergency determination under the MMBA. If approved by the city council, there will be an immediate redeployment of the 47 police officers to patrol. We would conduct a shift rebid in advance of the September 11th shift change, and then we would meet and confer with the POA. And we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I know we have several members of the public who'd like to speak, so I'm going to go to public comment, and then we'll come back to the council for questions and comments. We started on a slide describing the staffing in 1986, which is apparently about where we're at. The mayor from 1986 is here, Mayor Tom McHenry, has come to speak, Adnan Rashid Rose LeBeau, and Bob Siffle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for identifying me correctly. I appreciate that. Members of the council and chiefs, you know, I found that presentation, probably as you all did, very painful, to look at where we were as a council, as a city, and where we are now. I live at 110 Rankin Avenue, and I was interested, looking at the definitions of emergency as they were in the paper, and I've seen some of you discuss them. And, you know, people in the community, obviously, are discussing this. You know, emergency, I think in most people's definition is something unexpected, often dangerous, something that requires quick action, which I know you all are attempting to do. I live in a neighborhood in central San Jose, some of you know where it is. There's about 20 homes on that neighborhood, two have had their cars stolen from in front of their houses in the last three months. There was a murder there about three weeks ago, right by the park where a lot of my family go to. I know this is reflected in most of, most of the neighborhoods that you know. The good, safe city that we are, that's well-known, but we live in very trying, dangerous times. All we have to do is look at the news or the afternoon paper, and when you get home and take a look at exactly what's happening here and in the world. So, I think that, that definition of emergency is, is very important. I also think the definition of emergency is important in a different way. Whenever I come to City Hall, I always park outside and walk across the plaza, because referring back to the 1980s, you know, right out in front of here, two police officers named Jean Simpson and Gordon Silva were reacting to an emergency, and they rushed to it, and both of them died that day. You know, it's a very, very tough situation, something that everybody who wears the uniform of San Jose police officers understand well. It's something that demands emergency action. It's something that demands immediate action. You know, one, another reason I came here today is that when you see quarterbacks talk about police training and what we ought to do, it makes me concerned. When you see out-of-town billionaires wanting to interfere with you and the citizens of San Jose determining what we're going to do with my, with our police department, that makes us, and should make us all very concerned, and should make us very angry also. It certainly does me. So, I ask you to please look kindly, as you all have, and with the kind of urgency that you have, into what this emergency is. Work as you have been yourselves, with the mayor, with the chief, with the members of the POA, and let's rebuild the San Jose Police Department as something reflective of what we all want, and something that can do a job for the citizens of San Jose.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Rose?
Welcome. Rose Amador LeBeau.
I'm sorry, Rose, I mispronounced. I got Amador.
Thank you. It's okay. I encourage the city council to declare a public safety emergency, so that the police chief, Eddie Garcia, can sidestep the police union contract, and immediately assign the dwindling number of officers where they're most needed. It's the most expedient solution to a deepening crisis. Please support his recommendation for the safety of our city... Please support his recommendation for the safety of our city and the safety of our officers. Thank you.
Thank you. Anan Rashid? After Anan is Bob, followed by Paul Kelly, James Gonzalez, and Scott Largent.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and city manager, city councilman. My name is Anan Rashid. I'm a member of the CAP. I moved in here in San, to San Jose in 1980, and I lived in Evergreen area, and it was really the safest place I ever been in the United States. My kids, they used to go even to Montgomery School. They used to walk about four or five blocks even for kindergarten, we're talking about, and Montgomery School. And I was even the president of BTA for Montgomery School for three years. We felt really safe. Now, honestly, when we call up for an officer, or for any reason, even not for emergency even, it takes a while until officer comes, because we don't have even enough officers. The thing about it is, I know the budget, the money, but is it really more important to fix the bots on the streets, or for your safety and our safety, and our kids' safety? And this is here really very, very important. 15 years ago, we were the safest city in the United States. Right now, we are, we have in about 37, 38 facilities so far, and it's still going. Now we have to blow over officers, blow away officers from the gang task force, or from the detectives, and bring them on, on the streets. This is not really the way we really like to be. We like to sleep, we're safe, I mean, we like to feel safe when we sleep. And I don't want to be redundant, like the mayor, what he said. It is really getting really very short, and I, I just don't want to be redundant, and I, I hope you consider and you do something. Instead of this here, the city, we're talking about the academy, we spend $124,000 for each officer, and it's just really going somewhere else. And they have the right to go somewhere else.
Thank you.
You can do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Bob?
Hi, yeah, my name is Bob Sipple. I've been a neighborhood leader for over 30 years. Didn't need these glasses and our cheat sheet. I've stood in front of you, even in the old building. I remember just a few years ago, we were the safest city in the entire United States, and for five years in a row, we were that. And when we did that, we weren't at 1,108 officers. We were at 1,108 officers, but the national average for this type of city with that population should have been done at 2,500 officers. So I'm saying our police officers did a great job. We're now in a point where you're here to decide whether it's an emergency, and thanks to Tom McHenry, he answered some of it. An emergency can be a personal thing, and there's connotations to go with it. I can't imagine, if you're a city and you're declaring a state of emergency, you might have an inward feeling, oh, my gosh, we haven't done what we're supposed to do to lead the community, or PD says, we're not doing all we can. And being also a member of CAB and watching this community for so many years, I can say in this case, no, you all worked together with PD and found a solution that will be voted on in November, and these guys and gals have done this with 413 people on the street. It's, it's amazing. It's amazing we haven't had more problems than that. But today, we're having an emergency by many, many terms, including my own. I normally, as a neighborhood leader, say, can you fix the sidewalk? Can you help me get this? Can you get some more trees, whatever? In the last two years, I've heard nothing but can we stop the burglaries? I came home the other day, and somebody broke in, and the guy or gal was still in my house. And when I called PD, they couldn't come out. And it was enough for me to respond to all that, but on a personal level this year, excuse I had it happen to me. I had a neighbor threatening me for nine years, called PD five times. I've got relatives on this force. They wanted to come, they couldn't get here. It is an emergency.
Good afternoon. I'm Paul Kelly, President of the San Jose Police Officers Association. I'm here to support the declaration of a public safety emergency, and urge the mayor and city council to support our chief of police and empower him to do what he believes is necessary to keep police officers and our residents as safe as possible, and as soon as possible. There's been some speculation swirling around this issue. I want to set the record straight. Some of the council have said, why won't the POA work with the city on some of the items the city has identified that may help recruit and retain officers? One of those items, the PSRP, or as many know it as the DROP Program, a program designed to keep officers that have retired on the force a few more years as we struggle to fill our dwindling ranks. The POA supports this program, and we have been working on it. But your own city staff will tell you that even if we sign on the dotted line today and agreed to implement the program, the earliest it could be done and implemented is next year. We have, and we have an emergency now that needs a solution now. Another item is a referral program, where current San Jose police officers would be incentivized with time off or money to help recruit officers to come here and serve. I took an oath to tell the truth, and there is no way that I would be telling the truth to the people if I said, hey, come on over, everything is fine. It would be unethical. What the city would be asking us to do is to act like a dishonest used car salesman, and tell folks, sure, the engine doesn't run, but come on, we'll fix it later. The windows don't roll down, but we don't need fresh air. I cannot and will not do that. We have to focus on passing Measure F and the business tax that will put us on the path to ethically and honestly say to prospective recruits that it is right for them to come over to San Jose Police Department. We are losing officers faster than we can replace them. To those council members who are delusional enough to say we are not in an emergency staffing crisis now, I ask you, what number of officers does our department have to reach before it is an emergency in your eyes? I'll be here for any questions.
Thank you, sir. James Gonzalez? James is followed by, I believe it's Scott Largent, Mark Trout, and Sean Cartwright.
Hello, James Gonzalez, Vice President of the San Jose POA. This is a very serious issue that we're dealing with today, and it really should not be taken lightly. And I ask you, what credible alternative do we have to keep our police officers safe and provide the services that our residents deserve? I'm really sorry and disappointed that this issue has been clouded today by some of the rhetoric that really misrepresents what has been a total partnership between the POA, this elected body, our city manager, our police chief, everybody, to get many, many things over the line. We are working as best as we can to rebuild this police department. We've done partnerships on community outreach, coffee with a cop, we've gotten body cameras, major changes to our use of force policies, chokehold policies. We're moving the ball as fast as it's ever been moved forward, and that's not reflective of the rhetoric that's happened this last week. Councilmember Oliverio's proposal to have the sheriff swoop in and save the day is not a serious proposal. All of you received a letter from the sheriff outlining what a nonsensical idea that is. And I'll actually quote her, because that's her quote. The sheriff said, "I will certainly entertain any mutual aid requests and provide whatever resources necessary to meet our mutual aid requirements, but providing 340 10-hour shifts a week is a nonsensical idea, unworthy of any further attention," unquote, Mr. Oliverio. As far as the other bright idea of having CHP swoop in and save the day, apparently, Mr. Oliverio doesn't understand the way that mutual aid works. He fantasizes about redeploying our traffic officers, all six of them, all six traffic officers that we have left after that has been decimated. That's not the way the mutual aid works, and the CHP, being understaffed, is not offering that assistance. Look, at the end of the day, these are serious issues that serious people need to have a serious discussion about. This declaration of emergency must be made to keep our officers and our residents safe. I think it's time for Mr. Oliverio to take a seat at the little kid's table at Thanksgiving dinner and let the adults deal with this crisis.
Thank you, sir. Scott Largent? Okay, Mark Trout? After Mark Trout is Sean Cartwright, followed by Victorious Alexander and Carmen Hernandez.
I was talking to the gentleman that got emotional here a few minutes ago, and I said, you know, get guns, guns are good, and you all should be promoting our Second Amendment, and chief, Assistant Chief, how wonderful guns really are. Now, I was cleaning carpets a few weeks ago, and we were talking about your comments against Trump, and how three police officers from San Jose joined up, and I think, well, I won't say the city for undisclosed reasons, three San Jose officers left due to retirement benefits, and probably your comments about Trump. And let's face it, the cops are for Trump. Let's face it, maybe 1%, 2% for Hillary, your friend. I don't know if you heard, she seriously shot herself in both feet by mentioning Alex Jones and how he believes Oklahoma City was an inside job.
Mr. Trout, do you wish to comment on this item?
I, I'm getting there. I'm, I'm commenting on this item. It has to do with the police. And it was Mr. Jones that talked to the cops. I don't know, she's losing it. She's not totally insane, but about 90% insane. Now, we do need to hire more cops. We also need to deal with what's going on with foster care. I've been going down to the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors for, since October 29th, when Vicki Nguyen, look her up, Vicki Nguyen Child Abuse, the associate chief here, mentioned a bit about this in a not total way, but what's happening is this four-year-old girl was placed, I don't know why they're not calling the cops. She was placed in a foster home where she was brutally beaten for months. Her mom had pictures, was going down to the foster care. Why aren't these people calling the cops? That's what I want to know. Maybe, you know, I do not know, but this kid almost died.
Thank you, Mr. Trout. Sean Cartwright?
Thanks for sandwiching me between these two. I wanted to thank the chief, the interview that was in SJI, for saying that Black Lives Matter is valid. We knew that, but I totally appreciate you saying that, I really, really do. And maybe the POA will get on board and agree with you on that, instead of their rhetoric that they put out in the press release during July, because that was not a good move, and it was pretty inflammatory. I wanted to thank Councilmember Rocha again for his press release that he put out, where he apologized for Measure B, which I will still encourage the mayor to do, because I think it would go a long way with voters, and I think it would go a long way with our cops, who totally deserve an apology for Measure B. And they also deserve one from Madison, but she's still running away from that. I wanted to also mention that Craig Morales is almost a hashtag. Craig Morales is still in jail. We have not received the report from the independent police auditor, or from Internal Affairs, regarding the 5150 call that turned into him being in jail for over a year and originally facing a life sentence. Hint, hint. And that was a mishandled 5150 call, where he ended up getting shot numerous times by the police. We also have not been given a police report. I wholeheartedly support this. Our police deserve more respect. They deserve, minus my sarcasm, they deserve a apology for Measure B. They need more staffing. And please, 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 I am so tired of calling the non-emergency number and waiting on hold for 15 minutes, and eventually just giving up and going, well, I hope they survive. Thanks.
Victorious Alexander? Okay, Carmen Hernandez, followed by Ray Perez.
Excuse me. You have to bear with me, this is my first time here, but I've been reading so much in the paper about the shortage of officers, and the ones who are working overtime, and they, some lived out of town, and that is very stressful for them to, to work split shifts. Very stressful for them, and I'm very concerned about that, that department. So I would recommend you to put more, approve more officers on the streets. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. The police safety is a main issue in every single city around the world, not only in just the city. But the, one of the things, what I have observed in, in the last months, maybe last year, in San Jose City, and especially in San Jose downtown, is how drivers are, they don't have much discipline, yeah, because they are not respecting, you know, the pedestrian lights is one of them. Secondly, is, I believe, you know, that shortage of police officers from last year, they're coming back, and I believe they're, they're doing a very good job. I don't think it's that fulfilling 100% because it's not, never is going to be enough police officers, you know, in the streets, yeah. I know they are doing their best, what they can do, but if it's any help is for the police officers, is trying to be the best possible with the, with the people around. Because some people, the first thing, what they, they argue, it never is police there because they're all around, and sometimes there are no police cars around, or any police available right away. But what I, what I think is, as many police in patrol, but also in foot police in San Jose downtown should be a lot of much better. That's what I think. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Those are all the cards from the public, so we'll return to council for questions. I had a couple of questions. One's, chief, I was hoping we could go to that very first slide you showed, comparing us to 1986. I thought that was interesting, but I suspect there's more information as well. That is comparing authorized staffing. I'm assuming, of course, today we've got over 200 vacancies in our department. We are nowhere near authorized staffing. Is that fair to say?
That is very fair to say, Mayor.
We've got south of, well, somewhere on the order of 900 officers, I can't recall exactly. The street-ready, I know, are, it's a lower number, but with about 200 vacancies today, do you have any idea how that compares with 1986, whether they had that kind, those kinds of vacancies then?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we did. We had, we pulled some numbers from what we had with regards to our seniority list, and they actually had more officers, they had less, they had, they had less vacancies than we did.
Right. So they actually had considerably more officers in 1986 than we have today?
They did, yes.
Okay. And that's for a city that is, was about a third smaller than, than our city today in population. That is certainly a very challenging situation for, for all of us, and particularly for your men and women. I wanted to ask one question that I know has come up a lot, as I've talked to colleagues and spoken with members of the public, and then really is a question I wanted to ask either Paul Kelly or James Gonzalez. And the question is, if you're in agreement that we can move forward this emergency declaration, and then go through meet and confer procedures, why wouldn't you simply say it's okay to do it and waive meet and confer requirements? Why wouldn't we simply do it all today without any emergency declaration?
Well, I'd like to say first, Mayor, that with, with the rules and the laws in place, I looked strictly at the numbers when the chief came to me, and we knew there was an emergency right then and there, as soon as I saw the numbers. So I'd like to say that first. The other thing is, you know, I have a fiduciary responsibility. We have a, a contract with the city, and we have grievances from multiple officers right now that are going through the chain of command to the chief's office, and have also come directly to me. And this is prior to a lot of this discussion, but it was about moving 47 officers back. We're talking about uprooting lives. It was covered a little bit, but truly, it's about someone who may work on day shift and have everything set for childcare, and, and... someone who may work on day shift and have everything set for childcare, and their parent, an elder, whatever it is, their wife's job, their husband's job, and you literally are going to uproot everything that has been set in stone now because of that bid. So, we're not just talking about affecting 47, we're talking about 500, because it affects because of the rebid on everybody. And so, we just can't ignore our MRU and our contract, we're responsible to our members and that, and so that's one of the reasons that the time that it would take, I'd have to come in and bring the attorneys and interview the people who have these grievances and sit down with our board and have meetings with the city team, and like we discussed early on, we're talking about like Christmas time, I mean November, it just doesn't move that fast. And so, hopefully I answered your question, that's one of the major things and the hurdle that we saw early on.
So, just to be clear, members, yourself and members of your board have a duty essentially to assess each grievance independently, to determine whether or not the grievance will be endorsed or not by the union, is that right?
Absolutely, it comes in, whatever the grievance would be, and it's this one in regards to moving them and having to rebid, it could be anything, but we look at it with our attorneys and the executive team first, we sit down with our board and there's a discussion, and there is literally an investigation to see if this is a good grievance when we make decisions, so it's not a quick process in any means.
Okay. So, I just want to clarify, there's no sort of waving of the magic wand here to say this can, we can simply bypass this process?
Absolutely not.
All right, thank you, appreciate that, Mr. Kelly. I want to disclose, I've just been reminded that I may have inadvertently been engaged in a Brown Act violation. I was, we had engaged in conversations with members of our Brown Act, and I learned roughly at the same time that apparently there'd been a conversation with myself and the Vice Mayor on Monday of last week, or at least that was the recollection, the Vice Mayor, I wasn't clear myself, but certainly that was her recollection, and apparently there had been a conversation between a member of the Brown Act and another party, and as a result, it appears that we had engaged in serial conversations exceeding the number of five, so I want to disclose that this time, and certainly, Rick, if you want to be heard in any way. No, okay. We'll move on then to questions, but just before I say that, I just want to be very clear, this should not be a difficult decision for us. The chief has told us, if we're going to be able to move enough officers out to patrol to protect the community and protect the officers, and we're able to do so in time, and we've got a September deadline here, then this is the only path. We can certainly politicize this, we can certainly look for every other possible thing that the chief could be doing or that the union should be doing, and we can wait weeks or we can wait months, but this is the only thing we can do today. We have an opportunity to do something today, and I would urge my colleagues to do something today. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. And I am going to make a motion to support staff's recommendation, but before I do, I just want to thank the men and women of the San Jose Police Department for continuing to serve our community, for doing an incredible job under some really adverse conditions. When I look at this, the overtime, that means, I mean, this is after a 10-hour shift, right, Chief? They're putting in additional?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Four, six, I mean, 15 hours a day, I mean, if any of us, just think about what kind of toll that takes on you. It isn't hard to imagine that, so I just really want to thank them for hanging in there with us, for staying with our city, for working hard, and know that the people in San Jose do support you. And with that, also thank you, Chief, thank staff, thank you for bringing this to us. I'd like to make a motion to support staff's recommendation, determination of emergency under the Myers-Briggs-Brown Act related to San Jose Police Department staffing levels in the patrol division. And I just want to say, I agree with what the mayor just said, this is not a hard decision, this is something we need to do, and we're talking about supporting the chief and being able to utilize the staff in the best possible way to protect the residents of the city, to make sure that there's someone answering those 911 calls, and to make sure that our officers are safe. And I can tell you, from what I hear from the people in my committee, they want to make sure someone's there to answer the call. People want long-term things fixed, of course we do, and there's been a lot of work to that, and I'm grateful for working with, I've been working with the Peace Officers Association, the POA, and with everyone, this whole council has been working together to make sure that we solve the long-range problems that will help us eventually begin to hire, recruit and hire more effectively. But we have to do this now, and this is not a hard decision, this is a very easy decision.
Councilmember Pross?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm going to be supporting the motion and staff's recommendation and the recommendation from the chief. Sorry, can we go to slide 6, I believe it was? So, my very last shift bid was September of 2014, and I was one of the officers that very regularly would work, in fact, once every other week, and this was when it was still voluntary, and pick up one of the extra 10-hour shifts, along with many of my colleagues who knew that that need was there and indeed would pick up the slack. And at that point in time, there was already a common conversation amongst officers of burnout, of this was getting to be a bit much, you know, wondering when that was going to end. I certainly, at that point, and definitely in November when I won the election, had a lot of encouragement to go and try to fix this problem, knowing full well it was not going to be an overnight solution. But as you can see, since that date of being 47 officers short or 188 10-hour shifts to fill each week, it's only gotten worse each bid. And I have absolutely heard from my former colleagues in regards to how that burnout has continued. Certainly, we have now continued to demand more of them as the numbers have shrunk on patrol. We have, as you've seen today, and I want to thank the chief and Jennifer for the presentation to give some context to the amount of really the work and the attempts at resolution, the stopgaps, you name it, to try to resolve this issue, but ultimately, the two things kept in mind, which we've heard as a theme again and again, which is to keep our officers and our residents here in the city safe, that being the ultimate goal, which in times has obviously put a lot of other responses on hold, and we saw that being part of the solution as well in regards to some of the nonviolent crimes, some of these Bureau of Investigation units that are not investigating some of the violent crimes, and obviously we've had community members that are feeling the effects of that, especially in burglaries as we know throughout the city. But we're doing what we need to, to keep both our officers and our residents safe. And so, this was a question that came up from me to the chief when obviously first hearing about this, because I can tell you, I heard about this the moment that any officers caught rumor of it, and my personal cellphone was blowing up because they were very frustrated to hear that this may affect now their vacations, their daycare, as you've heard, the shifts that they have off, just really a lot of uncertainty around what this meant. And I'll detract for a moment to kind of highlight how that ties in line with what we heard from President Paul Kelly of the union in regards to the meet and confer process, and he made that statement there, obviously there's already grievances coming in. Without a doubt, there's absolutely no way that if we, just because the president of the POA is here saying, "I understand that," and I'm going to acknowledge that we have a crisis here where we need to declare this emergency, to initially bypass the meet and confer process and allow the chief to make this decision, by no means does that say that he's not receiving grievances, clearly already he is, or that he's not going to receive any more, and that somehow the entire union representatives would be in support of a non-meet and confer process or just to bypass meet and confer. There is going to be a lot of concerns, a lot of questions, some that I have proposed to the chief myself, just in regards to what does this mean for some individuals in regards to the grievances they're going to have. But ultimately, much like the union understands, that we have crossed the line here, we can no longer continue, and you look back from just the last shift bid of being with a deficit of 69 officers, we've now jumped up to 87 as a deficit. And this is where I clarified with the chief, you know, did we cross that line? Is this now going to be impossible for you to try to fill those 10-hour shifts every week, now knowing that your deficit is 87 officers from the bid? And the answer is yes, absolutely, resoundingly yes. There's no way that without pulling more officers out of the Bureau or other specialized units, that we would be able to do this, that our chief would be able to adequately staff on a daily basis to keep, again, the most important things, to keep our officers and our residents safe. And I did not just, you know, wholeheartedly welcome this as the only solution, certainly scrutinized it in my conversations with the chief, with other officers, with our union, and I am in full agreement, and in fact, I have now heard from a number of officers that understand the situation. And as much as they're frustrated with having to do a rebid, with potentially this shift in their schedules and having to go through this again, they also understand how hard it has been, they also understand how difficult it is when we are trying to fill these positions with the mandatory holdovers, with trying to get enough volunteers for 10-hour shifts, and they get it. And in fact, I'm really appreciative of some of the officers that I've spoken to that are aware of the severity of this crisis that we're in, and yet still holding on to a thread of optimism that we up here as a council and now potentially, you know, community can maybe resolve this issue. I think the POA and our city staff, as has highlighted in this presentation, absolutely we have shown that we can work together to try to resolve these issues. I hope that this is indeed another step in that direction, where we can unanimously make that decision to say we stand together, knowing that we need to make this decision. I think it goes without a doubt, and I don't think anybody should argue that we have a staffing emergency at all, I think that should go without a doubt, but that we absolutely need to make this declaration today to allow the chief to bypass the meet and confer process and to be able to make the rebid, get the staffing he needs, keep the officers in our community safe, and as was stated, we're still going to go through this meet and confer process, and we're absolutely going to still hear some grievances, and we're going to continue to make the best of this situation, and hopefully we have a lot more brighter days ahead. Thank you.
Councilmember Tamwin?
Thank you, Mayor. Please keep the slide number 6, I have a question for the chief or the people in charge. Is there a time limit, is there a timeframe that this declaration would sunset?
Well, as we've discussed, Councilmember, the declaration is going to be in order for me to be able to redeploy the officers, but if your question is how long the redeployment will last for, then it's going to last until our staffing and recruitment and retention issues are finally solved once and for all and we become a competitive employer again.
Thank you. Can I ask, this next question, I don't know whether it's to you or to the Assistant Chief who in charge of the recruitment, would it be you or somebody else?
I have Lieutenant Randall here from recruiting, if it's a recruiting question.
My question is, how does this help with your recruitment process effort, if at all? How does this declaration would help, if at all, in any way?
How will it help recruiting?
At all, I don't know, my question is, this declaration of emergency, does it help or hurt or in any way that may affect your ability to recruit?
Well, it's difficult to say, we'll have to wait and see. I think that in many ways it can hurt with negative publicity, however, in other ways, when we have staffing adequate to service the city and applicants know this, then they might be more apt to come here. But it's really difficult to say at this point, we'd have to wait and see what the next recruiting cycle brings us after this happens.
Thank you. I meant to ask maybe later after this, while you're here, let me ask you this, we'll look at the exhibit number 6. Do you, in last year of 2015, do you happen to, can you tell us your effort in terms of recruit, is what was the budget of recruitment in terms of effort, how can we increase the officers from within the last year? What is your, is there a budget for you to help you recruit?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch all of that.
What is your budget to help you for recruitment?
The budget? So, for the fiscal year, we have $350,000 to use for advertisements, travel, job fair fees, material supplies, so that's our overall budget specific to recruiting efforts.
And that budget stays constant for the past four, five years? Did it increase?
It did increase, but it just increased to that over the last two fiscal years.
Do you think the budget was sufficient to help you for successful recruitment?
Well, it's certainly helping us in terms of advertising and reaching applicants, getting them to apply, but, you know, in terms of how we compare to other companies and their recruitment efforts, we have a very small budget, but certainly any amount's helpful. We need to do all we can in terms of advertising, getting our officers out there to reach applicants and get them into the process, so it certainly is helping us, but could we use more? Absolutely.
I would love to support you in terms of recruit more. From my recollection, the last time, the presentation not too long ago, the successful rate of recruitment, new officers, only like 1.5%, is it correct? Is it fair to say?
In terms of who we actually hire from application?
Yes, yes.
It's a little lower than that. Once we get them through the process, so we have those who apply and then we have to take out those who are not eligible, they have to pass all the tests, and once we get down through the entire background, go to the hiring board, it's a little less than 1% of who actually get hired from initial application.
So, looking back from 2012, we add the number, you did see that line there? Do you think at that time we start worrying about the rate of recruitment versus the available officers at that time right away? Should we worry that, I'm talking about, should we consider that was an important issue then at that time, four years ago?
The same strategy was not in place four years ago in terms of recruiting. We have done some different things, we've, you know, had the audit recommendations, we've made changes to our recruiting unit. Certainly, the situation in 2012 is different than it is now, and so we have to look at each recruiting cycle separately and how we do things. So, it is different than what we did in 2012.
All right, thank you, I won't kill your time, but I would love to continue your conversation with you, because I really want to learn about what happened to recruitment and see if any way we can help you as much as we can to help increase the recruitment. Thank you. May I ask the chief one question, please?
Yes, Councilmember, if I can just finish just real quick, I just want to say that our recruiting unit, especially under Lieutenant Randall, is doing an amazing job. I will say that the reality of it is, is we're not getting the qualified applicants that we once did, and really the issue is that they're working really hard, and one of the issues that we cannot ignore is the fact when we're recruiting next to another agency that has better benefits and a different tier two, where our tier two is the worst in the state, it's very difficult to recruit qualified applicants. And so, I just want to make sure that although there's always things we can do to improve, we got to make sure that we also deal with that reality.
I think you're totally understanding, also are there factors also of my concern? For example, the rejection rate at the psychiatrist level, that's not been really understood, so I would love to learn more to see whether we can do anything to really improve that rate of recruit. Now, let me focus this to exhibit number 6. So, we are now in near September of 2016 and we decide to do an emergency, my question is, why didn't we do in 2014, where we started having 49 short, of March 2014, we have only 451, and we're short of 49? Why didn't we decide then to plan for two years later than we have now today?
Well, quite frankly, I'm not going to tell you we shouldn't have done it, we probably should have, absolutely. We absolutely passed the threshold where we should have been, and I feel it was my duty now to put the line in the sand where we're not going to cross. And so, an answer to your question is, is there a time limit, is there a timeframe that And so in answer to your question, yeah, we probably should have declared this two, three years ago. But unfortunately, we didn't. And when these issues came to light recently, it was necessity, it was a necessity to do it now.
In fact, I really thank you for your last answer. That answer changed my decision, that you give an honest and answer. We accept that this not a short-term answer like we've, we've mentioned before. This is a long-term crisis that we should have done a long time ago, and I really appreciate that. With that answer alone, that changed my decision opposing it, to support it because I really want to support you. I really want to do whatever we can, including contrary to my belief, because I totally think this crisis, I, I prefer not to use the emergency. I'd rather accept what crisis starting from four years ago, look at the chart. We should have accept as a crisis and come together and shake what happens, come on, we have a problem here, let's work together and, and look at all the options. But this is my, my problem. What you're asking me now is, come on Tam, help me to hold the hose, it's leaking, it's leaking, tell me, put pressure more. And I thought, chief, how about just turn off the faucet over there, which is increasing the input, increasing more recruitment, so don't run, we don't have requests like we have, look at the decline of five, four, five years. The same thing, like I asked, when we were doing this, we helped control the cover, hold on the cover of the pressure cooker. It doesn't help increase any more offices. In fact, it keeps the status quo, the same problem, we just shift it around. So instead of, you're asking me how, Tam, how reduce the flame, that feeding, the boiling pressure cooker. Instead you're helping, asking me to help you to, to, to hold the lid down. So in fact, I appreciate that, out of my frustration, I really thought that we, for the past 18 months or so, I would love to, to join you or Officer Randall, Captain Randall, do whatever we can to really increase the, the volume of the recruitment officers so we can plan ahead. And because from what I've, I've seen now, we can help you as much as we can to, to give you authority, so you can move people around. But we do not solve the problems, problem still there, we still short officers, they're still leaving, we don't have more recruit. So I really wonder, we might help you with this decision, but we does not resolve the problem. So do you see my concern?
I, I, I do, councilmember.
So therefore, on one hand, I, I understand your, your tough job and frustration, but my concern is, if we do it now and it's ongoing and we, we don't improve the recruitment, the pool of officer, six months later, the problem's still there. And we, we added more, more pressure on the officer, there've been shipped 47 of them, like we've, we heard about said situation. So out of that concern, I'd rather have everybody declare a crisis and sit together, give a total solution instead of one. And my last comment is, I heard about all the legal requirement. In fact, I learned a lot the last couple of days, and, and I must respect that, hey, you have a way to do it faster, but... And in fact, thanks to Officer Cal, Cal Kelly explained, President Kelly, that's how it takes longer for the negotiation process because I thought, if we have the support from POA for officers, then a stipulation of a temporary waiver of the millimiles brown requirement, that would help, it takes a lot longer. So with that explanation and with your, your leadership and your sincerity, it really changed my heart. I mean, but again, out of very heavy heart, I find it support. I wish, you know, we, I wish, wish to continue the conversation and really give a solution to it instead of a, a kind of reaction by this like we're doing now. Thank you very much.
Councilmember, I just want to make one brief comment that, you know, this was actually one of the most difficult decisions that we've had to make. It wasn't easy and that we are absolutely after the same goal. Thank you.
Councilmember Camus.
I, I have a deep regard for our police officers and, and our police chief and I, I've gone back and forth on which way I was going to go with this, but I, I do want to take your advice seriously and make sure that we have our, the things that you ask for. However, I, I am still very concerned about the, this whole message that we're sending to the public, that there is no emergency. There's no riots in the streets, it's not a disaster per se as when people would imagine what the word emergency signifies, but there is an urgency to get stuff done. There's, there's an urgency that I see that won't be fixed by what we're doing today. We have been talking for years on many different ideas that we've presented to the, to the police union, and I'd like to see a lot more progress being made. One of the things, you know, you know, there's, none of us up here believe that, and, and believe that the department is overstaffed. We all believe that we're understaffed. We all believe that our, our officers are overworked. So that there's no, there's no argument with, with that, with that presentation and the fact that you need to do what you need to do is not where I want to argue with you at all. What I want to see is a lot more progress on the things that we've presented, the police union, in the past come to fruition, things that could have avoided this declaration. And I'm going to, I'm going to call it the urgency because I don't, you know, the, the word emergency doesn't fit. This urgent, this urgency that we're doing here today could have been avoided if we had done some things long ago. But that being said, we're at this point, let's do something now. Let's do, you know, the, Paul Kelly came up here and said that the PSRP idea was a good idea. We actually presented that three years ago and it was dead on arrival when we first presented it. Now we, we have some working ideas on, on how it's going to get accomplished. What's to stop us from signing a sign, a side letter today and getting that across the finish line so that we can in three months from now, start retaining some of our retirees that are planning on retiring? I sit on the Public Safety and Finance Committee and every month you tell me, you testify in front of that committee, that we have five officers, 10 officers, seven officers retiring this month. If we were able to retain just 10% or 15% of them, maybe this problem could be avoided, but let's not talk about what could have been done. Can I get a commitment from, you know, the, the police union to sign this letter today? If they agree on it, why not get it done today?
Before I turn it over to Jennifer Shembry, I just wanted to say, councilmember, one of the things as we rebuild this police department, we're going to do it, have to do it in several ways. We're going to have to keep our people here. We are going to have to stymie retirements. We're going to have, we're going to try to bring some people back that want to come back. And then finally, we need to recruit. We need to address all of those. And although, you know, the PSRP program will definitely mitigate some of this crisis, it certainly would not have fixed the entire crisis. But having said that, just specifically with moving forward on it, I'd like to have Jennifer her comment.
Yes, councilmember Camus. So the PSRP program, just want to clarify, is, is a very kind of complicated program, a lot of technical issues with it, tax-related issues, retirement-related issues. We have been talking to the POA about it in general concept terms for a little bit. They've only had the technical side letter for a couple of months on that. And we're just entering into negotiations with them and we actually meet with them tomorrow. We're happy to sit down and talk about any questions they may have. They did send me some questions, we responded to them. So I'm hopeful we can get across the goal line soon, but it's not something I think that any of us would want to kind of rush through or have signed right now without having a conversation about it.
Well, my, my only goal here is to make sure that we can preserve our police force. And six months from now, if we're still talking about PSRP and, and then we're talking about only 400 people that are around to patrol our streets, we will look like idiots for not signing on the dotted line today is what I'm trying to say. Let's stave off future potential problems by, by, by getting things done. And that, and that is my biggest frustration. When I first came to city council, we were talking about how we didn't have any cooperation with our police unions. In fact, our police union, you know, was working to recruit other, other, our officers away to other jurisdictions. Now we've worked together on many, many different things and I feel that we are working in the sphere of cooperation here. We have put something on the ballot to fix the, to make our department much more competitive. We have gone forward and did many steps that we hope will, will provide the confidence for our police to know that, you know, we care about them and we want them to stay here. We've, we've, we, we have given them back the, the 10% pay reduction, the voluntary pay cut that they took. We've given them some increases in pay as well. Yes, we're not as competitive as other departments, but I like to think that our department is, is hand, you know, hands down one of the best departments to work for, for other reasons other than pay. And I know that, you know, a lot of our officers actually get promoted and, and, and get a lot of learning on the job that they wouldn't in, in, say, Los Altos Hills where they just patrol the streets and do not much else. Would, would you say that there are other things besides just pay that, that are good reasons to work for the SJPD?
Absolutely, there's reason, but good reasons to work for us besides pay. I mean, there's no, there's no doubt about it, that there are definite, you know, things that we do here that other agencies don't do. But we're missing that final piece that would put us up and above and beyond other agencies and that piece is benefits and compensation. If we had that, we definitely would be above the rest.
Well, I'm, I'm, like I said, I've been here, we've been slowly working to restore the pay. And, and every year that I've been here, we've, we, I've voted to increase pay for all employees pretty much. And luckily the times are with us that we can actually afford to restore pay. Previously, we mean, we didn't have the luxury to, to be more competitive than other departments. And I wasn't around when they were laying off city employees and I didn't have to make any of these hard cuts. So I, I can't comment to how other people voted. But this $7,000 or six or $7,000 bonus or referral fee that we also suggested should be a no-brainer. And I know the police union president came out and said he can't with a whole, with a, with a, you know, let this go to his rank and file. Why not? Just because he doesn't want to recruit people doesn't mean that any other officer wouldn't want to see some of their friends come back. And I don't understand why that, and maybe Paul Kelly can explain that to me if he, if he's willing to come up and, and say that. My, my whole goal here, I want to be clear, is to restore our police force. And, and these, these are some of the, what I have been thinking are no brainers, if you will.
So I think there's probably a few things you want to address is, I guess your first question, why the incentive program we have to wait on? Is that, is that, I think, I think, why not now? Why not today?
Yes, why not? You know, I understand that it takes months and months to get it set up. I agree. But, but, but if we sign the paperwork today, we can focus on, on how to go forward with it rather than when we're going to wait until the signatures are, the, the, the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed before we can go and talk to the pension boards and say, hey, we need to know how much this will cost and blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, I think I can answer. I'd like to first say, we're, we're in support of that. At the table, we absolutely believe there should be an incentive and there should be more of an incentive. So I want to, I want to say that first, we're not against it. We've never been against it. Anytime that we can assist the officers that we have to, to pay them more while there's negotiations going on, we'd like to talk about it and we're for it. To, to follow up with that, it's, would be absolutely immoral and unethical for us to sign a document now, right now, without Measure F getting over the line and knowing that when we're recruiting tier-two people into this agency saying it's the worst tier-two across the nation, there's no disability protections, we just can't do that. We're here to look after not only our members, but the people that we do want here, and we do want people to come here. And, and, you know, believe me, when, when I heard you say that, I don't want people, I don't want to recruit people, that's absolutely the, the opposite. But we have to take it a step at a time, a step at a time when it comes to this incentive because what we're asking our officers to do is go bring our people back, go get new officers, but we don't know what's really going to happen at the end. Are you going to have this tier-two? Are you going to have the protections and that safety net that you need? So that's, that's a, I guess a simple but also a complex issue. That's...
Well, we, we do have a tier-two and there are some police officers that have currently agreed to join the force and I'm sure that they're, I'm, I'm sure that they're aware when they join the force of what, what they were signing up for, if you will. And, and some people chose to join the force anyway. And so my, my hesitation here is that I'd like to see that cooperation where, you know, I know that you're making this assumption that people may not want to come back, but giving the, give, let them have the opportunity to choose. And yes, we, we're all in agreement. I put my name on the ballot on the, on the Measure F statement as a, as a pro Measure F person. So we're up here, we're doing all we can to make sure that we are more competitive. But what I'd like to see is you tell people that we're working to straighten out, straighten out our competitiveness and this is a great department to work for. And, and that's what I'd like to see and that we don't, and I don't feel that we have to wait until November to get that across the finish line.
Well, I don't know if I completely agree with you, but I, I can say this, it is a great department to work for and, and we do want people to come here. I specifically am talking about this incentive and, you know, there will be a, a time and a place as we work through these next couple of months and, and passing Measure F, that we are arm-in-arm and we are saying that because I do, I do believe we need to. I, I can tell you right now that there are a ton of emails and phone calls I've got from the people who have left and they do want to come back. There are people that are hesitant to come here because of the cloud in the past and, and the unknown of Measure F now. And, you know, we were all hoping, I think we were done this summer with a bow on it and then we're open for business, right? I know we were all hoping that and working together. But knowing that they want to come back, it's really a personal decision for every single person, a lateral or someone new to come in and really eyes wide open of what they have. And that's a decision that, you know, I don't, I don't get into weeds with them. They ask certain questions, I tell them where we're at and then they make the decision to come or not, because we have had people come back.
Again, I'm not, I'm not here to disagree with you on, on, as long as people are well-informed, that's all I care about. And quite frankly, I don't know what's going to happen in November, but in the meantime, it's our responsibility as elected officials and I think your responsibility as well to make sure that, that we're moving forward in a way that we can rebuild the department. And if this, if this measure fails by, by some, some chance, who knows if it does or not? Then, then what are we going to tell our citizens? We, we give up? We know what? I mean, you obviously, we have hesitation of outsourcing when we talked about like, for example, outsourcing the airport. And, and we don't want, if, if this measure fails in some way, then where are we? Are you guys planning for that? Are we planning on giving up our police department? Just because, I mean, what's the, what's the end result?
Yeah, I know. We're, we're not going to give up our police department. And, you know, do we have to look at all avenues and absolutely know that no matter what, even with Measure F passing or not passing, that we're in it and we're in it to, to stay together and do whatever we can to keep the city safe? Yes, the answer is yes. I mean, wholeheartedly. And I, and I can tell you that we have been, you know, I'm getting the message from you that you really feel we haven't been working together as a, a city team and a city government with the association in regards to making it better, getting ready to, you know, recruit more, retaining the officers we have. That's all we talk about. So it's truly, I think, just maybe the message isn't getting to you, but absolutely that's what we're doing.
Well, I, I have to say that it's a current message that I got under your leash, yours and, and Paul's leadership that I had not been getting in the past. So it's, it's a welcome change and I have to say that thank you for doing that. But I just, I prefer to see us work faster and work with contingency plans rather than hope for the best in November. I'd rather see us work forward quickly and immediately.
I absolutely can tell you we're doing it. We're doing it at the table, we're doing it as it seems. We're doing it at the table, we're doing it as it seems, as the teams sit across from each other, and that's just a fact. It's happening.
I'm, I'm, I am, like I said, I'm going to support this, but, but I will, I will urge you to please, that some of the low-hanging fruit, and there's 22, 26 things, I forgot how many things that we have that can actually better the department. 26 things, let's get some of these things ticked off. Some of them are low-hanging fruit. I, I would think that the $7,000 bonus is a low-hanging fruit personally. You, you may not agree, but I'd like for you to give it to your, your, the people in your, on your, on your committee to decide.
Rick? Yeah. I just, you know, I, this has been going, and I just want to caution that we're getting dangerously close to negotiating from the dais. It belongs to the bargaining table, that's just not the best practice, that's also the council policy, and I think it's fine to have general conversations, but I don't want to, and I don't think you guys want to get into a negotiation here.
No.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll stop my discussion and just by encouraging you to please help us move as fast as possible to helping the police department.
You, you did ask us a direct question also on the PSRP program. I think your negotiator said that we're making progress on that. We received correspondence that that program cannot be implemented till January 16, I mean, 17 would be the earliest that could happen. We're in the process of doing that. It looks like, like we're on track to do that, but to be very clear, it's not appropriate to negotiate these things from the dais. And from what it sounded like, you asked for something in return for your vote on this particular issue, and I don't need to tell you that that's not an appropriate thing to happen either.
No, no.
So we are working hard, but we can't trade you something here at the dais for your vote on this issue today.
I'm not trading anything. In fact, I set out at the beginning saying that I was going to vote the one direction at the very, very beginning, and I never insinuated that I was trading my vote for anything. I'll be clear on that. I want to do whatever I can to help the chief and help the police force, and these are discussions that should be had, and that's, I feel like I need to air some of these things out so that we can actually work harder on getting them across the finish line.
Councilmember, just real quick, just in response to one of your points when we're talking...
Chief, I want to clarify also for the record, I did hear Councilman Camus indicate his support for the item beforehand, so there has been no negotiation from the, from the dais, I just want to clarify that for the record. Chief?
No, Mayor, I just wanted to add, when we're talking about, you know, if we were to continue at the pace we're at now, what are we going to do? And like I said, my command staff and I are meeting weekly to figure out what's next, quite frankly. And we also, which is why we, we saw this earlier months ago, which is why we appropriated funds to bring in a company to help us look at what our staffing levels are now under the current situation, how exactly that would look if things did not get any better. So we're definitely going to have a plan in place regardless of the issues or what's on the table with POA. From an operational perspective, we're already thinking ahead about what we're going to do next and not waiting for, for anything.
Thank you, Chief.
Councilmember Monwin?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to say my support for the police chief to have the power to do whatever he sees fit to, to keep the city safe, and then to guarantee the safety for the citizen over this city. And I also very much in support for Measure F, because we need that to rebuild our police department. And I have several questions I'd like to ask the police chief. First, how long have we been in the problem of a police staffing crisis?
We've been in a crisis for really several years, but it's just recently gotten worse to the point where now we need to do something proactive, more proactive than we have been doing. So this is definitely not a new crisis or emergency, but it certainly has gotten worse recently.
Are you personally take responsibility for failure to hire more police to bring up the numbers of a police officer?
Do I take responsibility for not being able to hire? No, absolutely not. You know, we are, our units and our personnel and our recruiting have done a remarkable job, and simply stated, we are not a competitive employer with the surrounding agencies that we have here. In order to be successful, we need a little help, and we've not been very competitive, and that, and that really has hurt us.
So you mentioned that this emergency resolution, is it just a Band-Aid measure? So what is your real long-term solution to this police staffing crisis?
It's a very good question, and I think I, I just wanted to cover it with Councilman Camus a little bit ago, is, yes, this is a Band-Aid, absolutely. It's what we've been going through with our overtime and our holdovers is unsustainable for our staff, which is one of the reasons why my command staff are meeting weekly to figure out what we're going to do next. We brought in a company to look at the way we deploy currently and with the staffing levels that we have, how we can investigate crimes in the Bureau of Investigations, and how we can redeploy our force in a city of a million people with the reduced staffing we have. And so hopefully, we'll have that answer with the next several months so that we can move if things stay status quo.
In other words, everything will depend on the, whether we pass the Measure F or not?
Well, I'm not going to get into whether the measures, I'm just telling you, if we stay where we're at currently as the, you know, non-competitive employer that we are, we're going to have serious issues, and we're going to have, that's why we're bringing in a company to tell us exactly how, what's the best more, the best efficient way to deploy our reduced resources in a city of a million people.
But will there be any real long-term solution without Measure F in your opinion?
Again, all I'm going to say, if, if we cannot be a competitive employer again, we're going to have issues recruiting and retaining. I, I can't get, I'm not going to get into the, the measure.
What is your evaluation and assessment of the current public safety of San Jose City?
I'm sorry, Councilmember, I, I didn't hear you.
Your evaluation and assessment of the current public safety of our city? What is your assessment?
What's the assessment of the public safety in our city? I think the officers are doing a tremendous job to keep the city safe. They're doing a tremendous job at an unsustainable pace, which is why we need to take this measure.
How safe is your city comparing to other city with the same populations?
I don't have those numbers in front of me, Councilmember. We can get, we can look at those, I know the FBI compile stats yearly, but I don't exactly have those numbers.
The current public safety over San Jose City, is it getting better or getting worse compare, compared to last year?
Compared to last year, our aggravated assaults are, are increasing, but overall, overall, we're, we're doing okay as a city. But again, that's on the, it doesn't, that doesn't happen by chance. You know, that, that happens, quite frankly, on the backs of the men and women that wear this uniform, that are absolutely doing more and above and beyond what any police agency is requiring their officers to do. So it's not by luck that we're continuing to do this, is, it's the men and women of this department that are doing more than should be asked of them.
I'm going to interrupt for just a moment, I want to clarify something that Rick mentioned to me. I know several questions have been lobbed at the chief about Measure F, and the chief is legally prohibited from advocating for or against any ballot measure, and he has delicately been tiptoeing away from that issue. So just to be clear, questions about ballot measures are not well-directed at members of the city staff.
Thank you. So can you relatively say that San Jose City is as safe?
The city of San Jose is relatively safe, yes, I'm not going to deny that. But again, it comes at a very significant cost and price to our men and women that, and the fact that we cannot sustain what we've been doing to keep it as safe as it is.
And how about the level of police services to its residents? Any improvement compared to last year?
I'm sorry, Councilmember, one more time?
How about the level of police services to its residents comparing to last year? Is it, is there any improvement?
No, it has not improved. In fact, you know, that's one of the reasons why we have to have even more overtime for quality of life issues. So, you know, that, that certainly has not improved, but we're striving and trying to keep us afloat with regards to the quality of life, life issues that plague the city at times.
Yes, if it is possible, I'd like to have a, a couple of questions to the president of the POA. Yes? First, what kind of effect on, over this emergency declaration on the chance to pass the Measure F? What kind of effect on that?
I, I missed the first part of the...
What kind of effect of this emergency declaration on the passing of Measure F in your opinion?
In my opinion, how, how important it is for Measure F to pass?
What kind of effect it has on that? What kind of effect?
You know, let me just ask Rick to jump in for a moment.
I apologize, I'm hearing an echo. I'm hearing an echo.
Yeah, no, Paul, just a moment, I'm going to ask Rick his spot.
I think this really isn't the appropriate place to talk about Measure, Measure F and whether it's a good thing or not a good thing. I mean, the council put it on the ballot for a reason, but we have to avoid campaigning in a public building on public time. City employees and police officers in particular have even, even stronger admonitions about that. So I would just caution, it's, it's on for a reason and leave it at that. And if, if you want to take the conversation offline, you can take the conversation offline.
Thank you. So that's all I want to ask.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Cora?
Thank you, Mayor. And, you know, I think it's important for us to recognize what we're doing here, the Declaration of Public Safety Emergency, for lack, at least in my estimation, for lack of, of a better word, is a procedural necessity in order for us to allow our police chief, who is pleading with us to have this authority, to have the ability to rebid in order to get more officers on the street. It's not much more complicated than that. We thankfully have cooperation from our Police Officers Association because they recognize the urgency of this as well. And, you know, we, we are in a crisis, as the chief has indicated, we've been in a crisis for years. Anyone that doesn't recognize that either is delusional or has had their head in the sand. And this is something that we need to do at this moment in time. No one either up here, I would presume, and certainly no one that I've heard from, from either the command staff, POA, or anyone else, suggests that this solves a long-term problem. And I, I agree with the sentiment of folks up here that we need to do more to recruit, but, you know, increasing input, we can add 10 more recruiters, that's not going to help us recruit. We need to give our recruiters more to work with, and, and that's putting Measure B behind us. That's what's going to allow our recruiters to actually recruit. And they do a tremendous job, and I've seen them out there, I've seen how hard they work, and the fact that, that they're able to get folks to come here that are qualified, they're able to graduate the academy is a very good thing. We just need to triple and quadruple the number, and, and putting Measure B to rest will allow us to do that, because as so many others have stated, we have a wonderful police department, and I think putting that cloud aside will finally allow us to rebuild in the way that I know all of us want to do. And I, I just want to make a mention also, because there's been some comments and sense, whether, whether it's publicly in the media or here today, that, that somehow our Police Officers Association hasn't been cooperating or somehow an obstacle. And not only is that damaging to us in terms of what we need to do to put Measure B behind us, and, and we can talk about low-hanging fruit, but the reality is that we got to save the tree before we can get to those low, low-hanging fruit. And they're going to, our bargaining team is talking about all those things we're going to do, but if we don't get Measure B behind us, and we don't get Measure F past the goal line, the reality is, we don't even get to those things. And I don't even want to contemplate what happens if things don't go our way in November, and that's why every single one of us should be laser-focused on that right now. And let our bargaining team work with the POA, with consultation from the city management, the council, talking with our command staff, but let our bargaining team work on those items, but all of us should be laser-focused on one thing, and that's putting Measure B behind us. The second thing about this sense that there somehow hasn't been cooperation is that it's just not based in fact. It's just not true at all. You know, there, there have been times when I've been up here on this council where I felt very hopeless. There are times where, and, and some of us have gone through it, where we may have been on opposing sides at, at times, and it was very painful for all of us, regardless of what side you're on, it wasn't a good time, morale was low, I certainly, you know, put my warnings out there of what might happen, and, and we're at a place now where a lot of that has come true. But my hope began to, to be restored a little over a year and a half ago, when we had a mayor that, as soon as he was elected, reached out to a POA who extended their arm, their hand out. And we have a city manager that has been the right city manager at the right time, and we have a police chief that's working as hard as anyone I know in this city to restore our public safety. And any suggestion otherwise, that we haven't had complete cooperation, and we've seen the list of things that have been accomplished, in, in just a year and a half, you think about it, it's extraordinary what our, what our Jennifer and our bargaining team have done, it's extraordinary what Paul, James, and the POA have done in cooperation and in negotiation, and with the leadership of the mayor and, and our city management. And I mention that because it's important for us to, and unless you completely disagree, I think it's important for us to, to make sure that our residents, our neighbors, our community understands that, that we have been working with one another, that we have been doing everything we can to keep them safe, and, and there's a lot of obstacles that we've overcome, but there's plenty of more yet to overcome, and we're only going to do that by working together, with working with one another, we're only going to do that by sending the correct message, the accurate message, that we have been doing so over the past couple of years. And so, you know, when we think about, when we think about building a safer city, we must think about our residents and our neighbors, but we must think about our police officers as well. And when you, when we talk about recruiting, we talk about building our department, ask yourself, with all the facts at hand, would you want your son or daughter to work here if they had other options? And, and be honest with yourself. We have to get to a place where all of us can honestly say, yes, this is the, not just the finest police department, because I do believe it's amongst the finest police departments because of the people that are there, but the other factors that we're trying to put to rest, would you really want someone to be working in this department if they had other options, if you cared about that person? And so, at this time, we need to do this for the women and men of the San Jose Police Department, to keep them safe, so that we're asleep at 2:00 in the morning, they can keep our residents safe. And so let's focus on that, let's focus on making sure that we stay united in letting the community know that we have a really, really important couple of months ahead of us. And I'm so confident that once we get past it, these next couple of months, that we have the, we have a mayor, a city management, a chief, and a POA that's going to, that's going to start to handle those other items, that are going to start to bring people back to the San Jose Police Department.
Thank you. Councilmember Rocha?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just simply acknowledge the work of the police chief and the folks and the men and women in uniform for all the work they've been doing, city manager, the POA for moving us in the right direction, and the mayor for stewardship and leadership on this issue. So I'll leave it at that. I do have one question, and it's kind of a hard question, I'm sorry, police chief. But looking at that slide that shows all of the actions that have been taken to date around our low staffing levels, and I have to ask the question after this action today, what would be next if the situation continues as it is?
As I mentioned, Councilmember, and I know, you know, that's a good point, but my command staff and I are constantly looking at what we do next, exactly as the numbers, if the numbers reduce, if people that we hear are leaving, leave, and what do we do next? And so we're constantly trying to reshuffle what we need to do with the main responsibility of patrol. Having said that, again, months ago, we saw this occurring, which is why we went out to bid, and it's taken a while, the process of processes to bid for a company to come in and help us look at what we have staffing-wise and how we would redeploy under the current situation that we're in, and we're hopeful to have an answer on that regardless what occurs in the future, hopefully by the end of the year or February. But we're continuing to look at ways, we're currently, I know my Bureau of Investigations chief and his staff are looking at ways to, just in the interim, reorganize the Bureau of Investigations to more, be more efficient with the staffing they have. So we're constantly looking at those ideas, but ultimately, in the end, we're really hopeful that the report that comes out in our redeployment will give us better direction.
Okay, thank you very much. And, you know, I know each one of these steps we take is new uncharted territory for us and for yourself and for the rank and file. So having to answer that question, in some cases, is a very difficult question, and also one may not be able to answer because we don't know what the next step is, because we don't know what the number is going to look like, whether it's the academy or the resignations, the retirements, or the laterals that go to other work for, I'm sorry... I'm sorry, other forces. So then you're left with unknown, and we're going to deal with it the best way we can. But as an elected official, you can appreciate, if that question comes up and is asked of me, what is my answer, what's next? And I don't have a good answer, which is the only reason I'm looking to you and hoping that the professional staff is thinking about it. And I completely support city manager and your office in taking a look at that and having an answer to that question. I'm sorry you're going to jump in there.
No, just to say, councilmember, I mean, the harsh reality of it is, is what's next under the current projections is services will be reduced in order for us to answer the 911 call for service. And however things occur after that, but we have to make sure that uniformed personnel are made whole as best we can. And so, right now, at this point, it would be reshuffling what we have, but ultimately, in the end, it would be reduction in service.
And thank you very much for that honesty because that's also what we owe the public, is an honest answer when they do ask that question so they know what they can expect next and then what their role in this as well. And that's, well, I hope the rest of us and make it clear to you that whatever you need from us to help us avoid that what's-next proposal or alternative or plan or solution doesn't happen. So if we can give you the support and the resources to make sure we don't get there, please don't hesitate to let us know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Crosscomb.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I just want to say that I'm very, I'll be supporting the motion this afternoon. And I want to thank you, first of all, Chief Garcia, for your leadership. I know that this is, this has not been an easy time. And this was not a decision that you made lightly. But I also wanted to extend my gratitude to Paul Kelly and James Gonzalez for being here. I think it's important that you were here and that you were able to address the issue because when I go out into my community, I will be asked by my residents that in voting for this, in declaring a state of emergency, were the officers taken into account? Were we considerate of them? Because this is a city that respects and supports our men and women in blue. And so, I'm grateful that you're here and that there has been that cooperation and that understanding and that I can very confidently cast my vote today knowing that the, that not only is there the communication, but that there is that understanding that your members, our officers, are in agreement and in support of this. Firstly, to keep, I think, our officers safe and to keep our residents safe. And as we're looking at the numbers of homicides that are climbing steadily, not all gang-related, as some folks may think, but alarmingly, we have more DV cases than we've had in the past few years, which is alarming to me as well. But I'm concerned about those predators that are preying on my children in the district. And they're recruiting for their growing armies of gang members, but also property theft and all the same issues that every other resident, I'm sure, in every other district has been concerned about. So not easy decisions to make, I understand. And I know that there is a long-term vision that I know that you'll be working on. And we know what we need to do come November, so we won't discuss that up here. But I will be casting my support. And I want to thank you for your leadership as well as our staff because you've been working very hard over the past several months, not just on this issue, but on so many of the other issues pertaining to public safety. So I thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Oliverio.
Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, a lot of deep comments today, sincere comments from my colleagues. You know, we have disagreements. We see the world differently sometime. But, you know, cordiality is important, whether it's amongst us or members in the audience that have spoken. When you look up emergency, it's a serious, unexpected, dangerous situation. And in this case, it's not unexpected, right? The charts show that we've been under 500 patrol since 2012. And Chief, you were very courageous in talking about that perhaps something should have been done earlier. And I've been in these closed sessions now for 10 years. And I think probably the most, I don't know. When you run for this position, you have no expectation of closed session. It's really never discussed. And you get into these meetings and you end up talking about the same thing again and again on any given Tuesday. And it just, some things don't progress. And that's what you get when you're in that room. And we had an incredibly robust discussion last week in closed session. I only wish we had that same discussion in public. I'm a fan of, you know, just being consistent. And I think oftentimes, there are good ideas that come from the council. And then, you know, we do this initial feedback, right? Someone designated from the city manager's office floats the idea. And then sometimes, often, they're categorically rejected from the union side of the fence. That's what I've, you know, early on. So then we decide, well, let's not push it. They don't want to do that, so let's try to go somewhere else. And then, you know, then there are times where even as a council body, we'll vote in favor of something. And I'm thinking in 2013, we voted in favor to provide a bonus to laterals from other cities, other agencies. Not giving a bonus to an internal city employee for recruiting someone and getting them paid, which is fine, I'm supportive of that. But this was actually one to the other agencies because they're saving us the cost for the academy. And even when we, as a council, vote for that, that item still gets stuck in the process. And these things take time. And that's why we do them years before so then we could have some more relief of these items. So I guess, you know, that's, you know, troubling, right? Because, you know, we, you want to be able to solve problems. You want to be able to get things done quickly. But sometimes, it doesn't go that way. And that's just how it is in government because there's a need for everyone to have their say, et cetera. One idea or... So Chief, I've got a question for you. On the 47 officers, so I've heard that they're going to come from burglary.
They're from all throughout the department, councilmember.
Gangs, gang... So we have a small, dedicated group that works on child pornography that have been awarded through many ways and do very, very serious work. Are they going to remain or are they going to be pulled away as well?
We're pulling one from that unit.
And then that'll be down to a number? I don't want to actually say the number publicly.
Yeah, let's, yeah. But we're trying to keep, we're trying to, we're trying to not eliminate any units.
Understood.
Just reduce.
But obviously, the reduction, as has happened in the past, you know, and obviously, you're trying to manage emergencies versus the other things. And it's a delicate balance, and you're doing what you can do. But obviously, that's a delicate situation. And I think, you know, you can argue both sides about the officer. Like, on one side, we need to do this to do it. But on the other side, this vote will not create any less overtime. The overtime will not be reduced for the officers. The only thing that would do that would be additional patrol or additional officers coming into the department, which can be anyway, through the traditional academy, doing what other cities in California do, which is requesting assistance from other law enforcement agencies. But this item is not going to minimize that. And I am glad you put up the chart that showed that we were able to achieve success on various items, like community service officers, which have been used in other cities in California, I believe, for decades. So sometimes, it takes San Jose longer to incorporate good ideas that come from other cities. We were able to do some civilization. Again, practice is done in other cities in California. We were able to offer a bonus, higher pay rate for someone that had a bilingual skill set. Again, something that has been done for many years in other cities. Allowing military-in lieu experience, veterans, dedicated veterans that have come back from their service to work in the police department to be considered a, for academy in lieu of two years of college. Again, something other cities have done for years. So as much as they are things we can chalk up and say we were able to achieve things, we were frankly, you know, a little bit lagging on some of those things. I certainly think that our military veterans coming into the department is a good thing. Body worn cameras. Now, even though that is not, is new, it's just a very obvious thing, right? That elected bodies from local government to the president think is a good idea to eliminate many of the issues that have been brought up and also to make sure that the officer is protected so we know exactly what happens to them in those circumstances. So that's good. And then, I still come back to, and I know we can discuss this more at the study session, but, you know, we are allowed under state law to request help from other agencies. And Chief, you gave your story about the gentleman who was speaking, he didn't hear you, that he doesn't know what time he's going to get home to his family. The fact of the matter is, if we allow those other agencies to assist us at whatever effort they can offer, right? We don't have an expectation that they'll fill the hole 100%, but even if they fill the hole partially, that will help that officer to get home faster than they would without. And I know that there's been talk about, well, you know, it's going to take 10 years to grow the force. And we are going to need something to bridge that gap over time because we need an interim solution. And some people feel, well, have said that gee whiz, it'll be better once the election's over. Well, the reality is that you might as well start now because everything takes time. And waiting till then is, just almost makes it feel like it's really tied back to the election that has sort of been talked about but not really supposed to talk about up here. And then, I am happy that they, actually, we got the letter from the sheriff that's saying that they would be willing to help if asked. And we have not done that yet. So we may get there, whether it's before the election or after the election. We'll see what happens. And then, I also believe this is a procedural item. And it's because my good friends of the police union, you don't want to have to go through an E-board vote because that's going to be difficult because your members are going to go, why did you vote that way? And it creates a lot of angst for you. So instead, you pushed it to us and say, you do it, so that way I don't have to. And that's problematic for us because of this whole concept of the word that no one wants to say that creates a lot of hysteria within people. And they make us think that we're actually going to be able to do things when this is a very narrow aspect because we've been very broad today. But our action here is very narrow. And then, so I would simply say that, you know, the only real chaos, emergency, whatever you want to call it, that I see is that closed-door union negotiations and the long process that they take to achieve anything is the real failure. So me voting for this today would be to saying, I acknowledge the process set up in the state of California is too long to get anything done. That would be my reason to vote for this. And then, you know, it comes down also to, we've known this is coming. And a failure to prepare doesn't necessarily constitute a yes vote for me. I think, Chief, yourself, Chief Knopf, other individuals, everyone does a good job, right? You point out that people work hard, they do their best. And of course, not everyone's happy inherently, if any organization, but it's, you're in a tough spot. But if this, if I felt this was going to be a 6-5 vote, I would vote for this, to give you the support. But knowing that it's not, I need to withhold my vote because I think there are so many more things that we could do that I hope we will do, and whether it's pre-election or after-election. But I think there is just much more to do. And I think we also, you're bringing in a consultant. And maybe we have to question our own paradigms because we're used to doing things a certain way. And there are incredible amount of police chiefs all across this country that manage things differently. And obviously, change is happening within law enforcement. The president's advisor for policing, I think he's the former police chief from Philadelphia, he has said that 50% of all police departments should be eliminated. 50% of all police departments should be eliminated and that we then approach law enforcement in a regional way. And so, you know, he's President Obama's advisor. I'm sure he's pretty qualified. And I'm sure that's a question of debate. But I think that's somewhere we may be going to. We've already talked about it in other ways of regionalization of government, et cetera. So you're going to have the support of the council today, minus myself. But I wish you the best in the shift bid going forward. Continue to be candid with how you feel things are. If you feel you need other items, please come forward. Don't be shy. I know you report to the city manager, but in the end, you still have freedom of speech in this country. And I hope you will express yourself as much as my friends from the police union did today. So thank you very much.
Then, councilmember, if I could just respond on a couple of just points, just to be clear. And again, you know, I'm anxious to hear from Chuck Ramsey on those issues, I think, at the next major city chief at the next major city chief, says I'm sure it will be covered at some point. But just with regards, just want to cover real quick lateral incentive. You know, one of the issues that we have with the lateral incentive that we have was honestly, obviously, the elephant in the room, and, and really having laterals from other agencies become tier-two in this city, which, as, you know, well-known, regardless which side of the fence you're on, it is a very much an outlier with regards to the benefits. And then the other aspect is really, and this is the one that hit to home me, to me mostly, was just, how do I, how do I give a lateral that has no ties to this city and give them an amount of money, regardless of contracts, yet not give the men and women that have stuck through the bad times with the city, nothing? And that was, that was an issue that, that really, that, that probably resonated more with me than, than any of the other issues. And then the other point, really on the overtime, I mean, the overtime, it will save overtime. I mean, if we're bringing 47 people back to patrol, that's 188 less 10-hour shifts a week that I have to fill on overtime. Granted, you know, other things are going to, honestly, going to fall, not, take a little bit more time in investigations, but that doesn't necessarily have to be on that overtime basis. So I just wanted, just to make those points clear, but I don't, you know, again, I appreciate, I don't know if I'm going to say support, I appreciate where you're at with regards to wanting this department to rebuild, but I just wanted to clarify.
Well, thank you, Chief. And clearly, the question on the lateral is a what-if. But if we don't allow the what-if to ever occur, we never know. And so we should allow, you know, everyone has a freedom to control their own destiny, and someone may choose that. And I know it's sort of the question is, well, what about the officers that are here versus this other person coming in? But again, they're saving us a tremendous amount of money on training costs. At the same time, I have no issue with increasing police compensation. I voted against the last police package because I didn't think it was high enough. So, and I expressed that. But, you know, we'll get there, but I clearly think increasing the pay for police officers for a variety of reasons has to continue to outpace the balance of the workforce. Now, if there's a day where we have more people applying than we can take, then that's another story, but we're not going to see that for a while here and, and in North America, from what I understand from, from Ramsey as well. Thank you, and thank you for my colleagues.
And can I just clarify on the lateral incentive program really quickly? So we do get our, as we talked about, our direction on labor negotiations in closed session, and there was a subsequent closed session conversation specifically on that issue, so I wanted there to be an impression that it was directed in public and then we completely forgot about it, so.
Thank you for that clarification, Jen. Tam Nguyen.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question with the city attorney. This has to do with the legal question whether we can use an alternate word instead of emergency? Can we do something about it to, to give a, to not give in a confusing message to the public?
Well, we're operating under the Myers-Millies-Brown Act, which is the government code section... Jen, if you want to put that slide on? And so it's the language out of the state statute that we're looking at. It's subsection B here, and so that is why we're calling it an emergency. We're not calling it an emergency under our charter. This isn't a flood, this isn't an earthquake, this isn't something of that caliber, but this is something that allows you to bypass the meet-and-confer process immediately. You're going to go negotiate with the POA on this issue, it's just you don't have to do it right now, and you're allowed today to take the action. So we're, we're tracking state law, that's why the word emergency is in there. If I, if I had to draft the statute, I'd use a different word, but, you know, we don't, we don't, we don't draft state law.
Thank you, that's why we need you here. Anyway, that's true, I mean, totally understand, I appreciate your explanation, because as you might know, you know, for the past couple days, people, constituents have called us and asking a question, what's going on, is it emergency yet? In fact, not only the people, but the very informed and educated people, including the, the biggest newspaper here, in the, in the editorial, listed a misinstitute and referred to as a legal mandate of 500 officers, why in fact it's not. It's just something that, is it, Chief, is it something that number that you thought that appropriate for our services, but there's no legal law requirement, right, for the 500 numbers?
There is no legal requirement for the 500. 500 is just our estimation of what would keep our officers and this community as safe as possible.
Thank you, that's what I mean by adding more to the confusion, that that paper called a legal mandate, but it's none. But, so can, can, may I suggest to the maker of the motion to amend, have a friendly amendment to, instead of just the word emergency, that may create unnecessary public panic by modifying it, use the word M-MBA emergency?
Rick, maybe you should jump in.
If you want to call it a emergency under the Myers-Millies-Brown Act, or Myers-Millies-Brown Act emergency, I'm fine with that. I mean, it clarifies, that's where we're, we're getting it, so.
Awesome. I mean, that's what it is.
I just want to be clear, it's, it's an emergency, it's still an emergency under the Myers-Millies-Brown. Right. That's what we're operating under. And so under the Myers-Millies-Brown Act, it is a, it is an emergency.
I'm the maker of the motion. You say tomato, I say tomato. I don't think it changes anything. And in fact, if we just focus on the very narrow thing that was in front of us, we might be able to communicate more effectively with our constituents and everybody else about the nature of what we're doing up here, instead of trying to boil the ocean with every single item we can bring up. So I appreciate everybody's patience, and I think we just need to move forward and vote.
And I just note for the record, we, in our memo, we did call this a determination of emergency, not a declaration of emergency, just the wordsmithing had some, a determination of emergency as opposed to a declaration.
Could you explain what we determine emergency, we, we not declare it?
That was in one of the memos. We basically called it an emergency determination by the city council instead of a declaration. It is, it is just a minor wordsmithing change, but if not, so is the public wouldn't be confused that this is something other than operating under the Myers-Millies-Brown Act.
Right, so, yeah, thank you. I would do my best to explain to my people what, what the MMA or MBA is, but I, I take it, and I appreciate your effort in explaining it.
Well, in this case, the action is more important than the word. So we have an opportunity to take an action. I just want to briefly say one thing before we take the vote, which is, you know, a lot has been said, and I think Councilwoman McCullough described some of what this police union has attempted to do, working with the city, with, with the police brass, to try to help us address the situation. You know, there was a time a couple of years ago when I couldn't get a return phone call from the head of the police union, and it's no secret that we've been on the opposite side of plenty of issues. But since this, that time, what we've seen is significant movement on everything from military in lieu to mandatory overtime, mandatory holdovers, bilingual pay, a whole host of issues, but most importantly, the settlement of a very, very complex pension reform issue that spanned everything from disability, retiree healthcare, to, to pensions, that's going to preserve $42 million this year if we're able to implement this, and essentially close defined benefit healthcare plan for new employees. There were very significant, very significant concessions that were made through this negotiation. And so I do not believe it is appropriate somehow or another pit members of one group or another as being obstacles here. And the folks have been trying their best to work together, we're all working under very difficult circumstances, and nobody's working under more difficult circumstances than the women and men who are, who are wearing the uniform right now. There is a motion from Vice Mayor Herrera. Let's vote. Let me interrupt for a moment. Walter, I saw, did you submit a card? Come on down. Sorry, there's one more member of the public who'd like to speak.
Do you want me to abort the vote?
You can keep it up, we're just going to allow Walter to speak.
My name is Walter Wilson, and I'm with the Black Leadership Kitchen Cabin and African-American Community Service Agency. But more importantly, I've worked with the last five or six police chiefs here, probably before most of you were even here in office. Excuse me. One of the things that I just want to say here is that I have been a advocate and also a, a person who's one of the biggest critics of the police department in the city. And I also happen to know that this police department, excuse me, before it lost four or 500 of its best, was one of the best police departments in the country. But let me leave you with this, because this is an interesting conversation you guys are having. Let me loosen this up. It, it is as though you guys don't recognize something. Before we lost the four or 500 officers, we were already low on the number of officers we needed for a city of over a million people. Are people aware of this? So this is an emergency, and the public safety is not something to be bartered with. This is real. I'm on record all the way back to 2012 as saying, hey, where's the police department at in the city? Where I live at, near Blossom Hill and Almeden, they almost vanished. I mean, even today, you don't see them like you used to see them, and there's a reason for that, because they're not there. This, this issue that's happening here today is not something that's, that's negotiable. This is a public safety issue. This is not a union issue. This is about our families and our children, and being able to keep us safe in this city. So listen, I don't want to make a long speech about this, because at the end of the day, that's what we're all about. We should be here about keeping the city safe and keeping our children safe. Thank you.
All right, there is a motion now. I understand, Tony, you have a problem with the electronic system, is that right?
The display is not working for the broadcast. We can see it here, but we can't see it on the TV.
Okay. I see someone else wants to speak now. Sir, did you submit a card? Okay, please come forward.
Hi, my name is James McDonald, and I came here about a year ago, and I asked you to, about that video they made, and you said you was going to take care of it for me, and now it's worse now. It ain't got worse now. I mean, I'm sure you know about it. I'm positive you know about it. I'm positive everybody know about it. God got his hand on me, and nobody can do nothing to me. I know that, too. And nobody won't help me. And I've been asking, and I've been getting harassed, and I've been getting all type of stuff all year, for the last couple of years. They've been doing it to me for the last couple of years, and nobody won't help me. And I'm coming to the mayor like I did before last year, and I asked you for help, and I didn't get no help. The guy come to my house the next day to apologize. But what apology you going to do when my name is slandered, my kids and my mom is ashamed and everything? And everybody laugh like it's a joke. Like it's a joke to them, because God got his hand on me. So they jealous because of that. They got hate in their heart because of that. Why is that? Can you answer that, Mr. Mayor?
Sir, it is time for public comment, not for response.
Okay, I'm finished.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion on the floor. Should we take an oral vote?
No, I just need your vote to enter, and then you can announce the no votes out loud.
All right, the vote is 10 to 1 with one, one dissent. Councilmember Oliverio. All right, we're on to item number 4.1, the North San Jose Area Development Policy. Yes, please, thank you.
Good, good afternoon, Mayor and council. I'm Kim Wallace, Economic Development Director and Deputy City Manager, and I'm here with our team as promised. When you directed us last April to come back with a progress report in August about potential updates to this North San Jose policy. As you can see from our memo, at this point, our staff recommendation is to put on hold...